drastically, twenty-five to twenty-eight percent.
Yeah. You're paying both sides of your social security payment, you're paying the employer's side, but you're conducting also support. So you're preventing your tax on the internet.
Now, let me ask you, Constance. You're not paying social security taxes. Do you want to go through this? You want to go through there, too?
Yeah.
How's it going?
Pretty good.
Hey, hey, I'm here. We're hiding there. Hey, Jerry, how are you?
Well, what I'm saying is, okay, okay. We do too. Yeah, we do too. But we also, we also save somebody. And then rent too. Yeah. Yeah, because you can get really, you don't prepare ready. And just crushed. And people do, yeah. Yeah. He's another dumb lady. He's easier than my mom in charge. I'm not alone. They are. They're different. They're great guys. Nice to talk to you. Thank you, Mo Reiers. They're working on this one. Yeah. When that started off, it was kind of like, we started, we got the conversation going. Because it was just years since we've started. Figure twenty.
We have three minutes.
We did?
Yeah.
Here it is.
We're circulating the sign in. It's optional. I mean, if you don't want to sign in, it's not a requirement. Might help us get back to the only theater and so forth.
Do they have a tab? I don't know.
Yeah, where are you with? There's something good. Jerry. You always have some hats to wear, Jerry. No. I guess. Yeah.
That is, um, the constrictors. Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock and we'll get started. We want to thank everyone for attending our meeting tonight. Just to briefly highlight, two other groups of money that we received and what had transpired over there before we get into ARPA funds. The last two years have resulted in a lot of federal monies being allocated and being spent throughout our nation. And the county received ten point two million dollars in CARES funds. Through those monies that we received, through the help of planning and CEDOCOG, through their guidance, we received applications to assist many businesses and entities throughout our county. We were able to assist three hundred and fifty businesses, forty-three nonprofits, and every school district received two hundred dollars per child to help maintain and keep the kids in school or prepare for the pandemic to get them back into school. That resulted in three point one million dollars for the school districts out of the ten point two. That's what we did with the CARES money. We have about one point, I think, one point six still in the county general regarding those funds that we can still utilize for county projects. Then we received monies through what they call the ERPA program, the E-RAP program. We utilized that and we partnered with STEP to help landlords and utility companies to keep people in their homes. And to date, they have allocated about eight million dollars of those monies to keep landlords paid and the utility companies up to date. They're on the second batch of their monies regarding that. The reason why I'm here tonight is because of the, A, the ARPA program, the American Rescue Plan. And we prepared a short presentation, PowerPoint presentation. So I'll have the director open up about the allowable uses for the ARPA funds. We had to wait for direction from the U.S. Treasury on how to utilize these funds because everything from the CARES monies to the E-RAP monies to these monies are all being audited. We want to make sure they're allowable expenses and everything's being spent appropriately. So we had to wait for the general uses. Now, what we did is, county will be receiving twenty-two million dollars. We received eleven million last May in the first allocation. The second allocation will be this May, we'll receive another eleven million. So we have twenty-two million to utilize. So if you want to go to the first slide presentation, the director will explain the general allowable uses.
So the federal government has given us some rules, and these are general in nature. There's some more specifics to them, but generally, we can spend the money to support public health response to COVID, to address the negative economic impacts that COVID has caused, to replace public sector revenue loss, premium pay for essential workers, be that first responders, hospital personnel, and some of our county personnel fit into that category. And also waters or broadband infrastructure. While they are allowable ARP uses, there are other infrastructure dollars that are anticipated beyond ARP, and there are separate broadband funds available through ARP. So what we don't want to do is focus all of our county attention on broadband, but look at the other ARP funds that are available for that. The four primary entities that would generally be eligible are municipalities, public authorities, so water, sewer, nonprofits, 501(c)(3), and then privately owned businesses.
So going forward, the monies have to be allocated by 2024 and spent by 2026. And the three commissioners, we sat and we discussed a strategic plan to go about utilizing and spending these monies. We all agreed that these monies would have to be spent on projects that would be generational, things that would make a big impact in our communities, things that would help large populations at the same time would be a generational impact. These are monies that are going to have to be paid back by our grandchildren and our children, so we wanted to make sure that they're beneficial for our communities. So we initially met with the city last June. We talked with the city, we asked them what their needs were, what they were looking at spending theirs on, and they were in the same now as stages that we were, what we were going to spend our monies on, and they had some ideas, and we said we'd meet back with them on a later date. Then in July and August, we had three nights of meetings with our townships and our boroughs to listen to what their needs were, because they're receiving our monies also, small amounts, but how we could partner in some of, maybe some of those projects, and how we could help them and at the same time we could utilize our monies. And that was very beneficial, hearing from those supervisors and those council people and members of those communities. Then in the late fall, we started to meet with the water and sewer entities throughout the county and big projects, you know, the water and sewer. For instance, Jersey Shore, Jersey Shore's water is a hundred and eight years old system. They still use wood filters. That services seven thousand people and what they're facing in the future, and we have businesses going into their community and making it grow, and the school districts, and how we can help these different townships and boroughs. And so we talked with the Water and Sewer Authority. We informed them that we were going to be talking to the developers and realtors next, and they thought that was a great idea. When you get done talking to them, can you set up a meeting with all of us? Get us all in the same room, so they'd be glad to. So as we started meeting with the developers and the realtors, we learned that there's a housing shortage in Lycoming County. Normally, there's six hundred houses on the market. On the average rate now is about one seventy-five. So we have businesses coming into our area. We have a new one over on the farm across from the landfill that's going to bring one hundred and fifty jobs. They're going to be opening in the first week of May. We've talked to other businesses that are expanding throughout Lycoming County, and people are moving here and they're looking for homes. And they're looking for all types of homes. They're looking for newer homes, they're looking for some of the older homes to rehab, and so we had to tackle that crisis too. That's part of the infrastructure. Then we had the housing and water people meet together, and out of that came a task force. And a small task force, they developed some ideas to bring back to the commissioners, and they gave us a great little plan that we're going to be looking at, and with the planning department going forward. So that's what we've done up till tonight. We thought we want to reach out to the public. These are everybody's monies. We want to hear from the public and hear whether they think we're on the right track, get their feedback. We were down at CCAP last week, which is the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, and they had their spring conference. They had one of their breakout sessions was how to spend your ARPA monies. And we were pleased to find out we're kind of ahead of the curve. There was counties that were listening to us on how we developed this plan, and they were like, they were, wow, that's pretty good. Some of them haven't even started yet. So they were very impressed to hear what we've done so far with the last nine months and how we're going forward. And so we have two more meetings that we want to set up, and we have them set up for April 12th. From two thirty to four o'clock that day, we'll be speaking to our early childhood entities throughout the county, because one thing we've learned is that employers are having a hard time getting their employees to come back with children. They can't find adequate daycare. You have parents staying home now taking care of the children because they can't find that daycare that they once had. So that's a small crisis also that's starting to develop. And then also, that evening, we'll be speaking to our farmers at six o'clock. Farmers make up a large part of our county, they're crucial, they're being faced with prices that are going through the roof, their fertilizer aloneness is going to be extremely costly this year, and ways we may be able to help the farmers. So that's what we'll be doing next. So over the last numerous months, and I'll turn this over to Shannon Rosman, the head of our department, John Lavelle, the deputy, they can explain the application process and the requests that have come into the county over the last several months.
Let me just, a couple of comments on this, on the generational perspective that we have described. I think it's important, every person who comes to the county with a request has a different perspective on the definition of what generational means. And some people may not see a vision that other people see. I think it's important that if you are looking for something that you see as generational, to find a way to explain how the allocation of funds in that category would change the nature of the community, whether it's in terms of jobs. I mean, essentially, the developers are looking for support in building new housing, right? That's easy to see, how building new housing frees up older housing and also is open to people who may not be interested in buying a home that's a hundred years old and can afford something more, right? But there's other things about generational. I mean, for example, I see folks here from the Arts Council tonight, right? So there's visions about how arts in a community can change the direction of the community, the people who are attracted to the community. I think it's important to try to educate the commissioners on that, because that is something that, from the perspective of the people who are very concerned about the development of arts, and there's lots of books that we've been given, that I've read some of the books that you've given us on the arts and so forth, how it can transform communities. The other, the other part on the early learning, just so that people understand, this isn't about, it's partly about what Commissioner Metzger said in terms of getting people back to the workforce, right? Because you know from national statistics that a lot of primary caregivers, who are primarily women, left the workforce during the pandemic, and many of them, many childcare centers had to close. But the other component of it is building a workforce in our community. Population retention and population loss are the two biggest challenges we face as a community. Population's gone from a hundred and twenty thousand to a hundred and thirteen thousand in the last twenty years. That means that a lot of people who were in the workforce are no longer in the workforce. I mean, some of them by choice, because they're baby boomers who are retiring or may retire in a year or so, some of it by the fact that they're not coming here, the families are not moving here with the young kids who would be part of the workforce. So part of our drive for this generational perspective is how do we set ourselves up to be a county that experiences population growth in the next decade? And part of that is taking the kids who are here now. Early learning is not babysitting, right? We asked, the commissioners asked the early learning community to educate us on the quality and quantity of early learning centers in the county. And it was quite eye-opening what they shared with us at one of the public meetings, and you can go online and see it, and it was coordinated by STEP and the blast unit that oversees early learning. There's, it's a desert of early learning. In other words, there aren't enough centers, high-quality centers, right? There are waiting lists to get kids there. And then also, what they also educated us about is that the, in the last twenty years, the amount of research that's been done on the brain, the development of the brain, and how much between birth and age five, a child's brain develops, and I would ask anyone here if they know. Commissioner was there?
Oh, yes.
You know?
Yes.
What was the answer?
Six.
No, it was like eighty percent. What's that?
It was ninety percent.
Ninety percent by age five.
By age of five.
Right. You had said it at the meeting, that's right. But ninety percent by the age of five. So what we're talking about is really trying to build a workforce from the ground up in our own community. Yes, we want to try to attract people to move here, but fifteen years goes by in a blink of an eye, and those kids are ready and graduating from high school, right? And so you want to have them be able to get out and work. So those are some things to think about in terms of that, some of these categories. And in terms of what you think your request for funds from the commissioners could do to transform the community.
Champ? The fourth slide.
I'll come around so you can actually see it.
And if you can explain the application process, I'll.
Sure. I'm going to let John, do you want to come up too? You can explain the application process.
I want to just get the summary on the left there.
Yeah, so, right now, what we have for applications when we're looking at totals, we actually have fifty-four point six million in requests from outside entities. Remember, we have twenty-two million dollars available. We have fifty-four point six million in requests from outside entities, which Commissioner Metzger listed the types that were eligible to apply. We also have, from within the county, we have twenty-four point seven million in departmental requests. Now, obviously, things have to be reviewed, categorized, determine their eligibility, and also prioritized, but currently, we have over seventy-nine million dollars in requests for this twenty-two million dollars worth of funding. And one of the other things too is, I just wanted to clarify what Commissioner Metzger said about the CARES Act fund. The commissioners have not allocated the remaining portion of that fund, but it actually has been spent. Because the way that the CARES Act fund worked was, there were certain requirements of who could go to, and the commissioners gave out a lot of money for grants to those different entities. You had to spend it by December 31st. And so what happened was, it was such a short period of time to get those funds out in order to spend it, we were allowed to spend it on certain types of costs at the county level that was associated with personnel time that was pandemic-related. So in order to secure that funding and not give any money back to the federal government, we took the remaining amount that was left in those funds and put it in for the personnel time. But the commissioners, unlike some counties, which then just put that in their general fund and used it to supplement the general fund, the commissioners have kept track of how much that money is, so if they see something that they think is worthwhile, they will use that funding for that specific project in the future. But we actually, when you look at it, it is technically already spent. So it's not, and there will be some opportunity potentially, depending upon all these projects that we've received, for that in the future. We're not sure. Okay. This is just a first look. These pie charts represent the total cost of all the projects applied for, not just what they've asked for, but what their project totals are. So, I mean, you're looking at, I think, almost well over a hundred million dollars when you're looking at the entities that have applied for projects. And I'm going to let John go over how we did the pre-application process.
So, obviously, when you, I guess, just starting from square one, twenty-two million dollars at that point looks like a lot of money. So the commissioners wanted to basically determine what the community need was, to come up with some priorities, make sure that we're not missing any, you know, sectors of the community that might have need that so far that we're not aware of. And what we've done is, we had an internet-based pre-grant application to basically give us that picture. Turned out to get a pretty darn good application rate, a hundred and nineteen. That's pretty impressive, you know, given my experience for the last fifteen years being here. And then also for the need at over fifty, was it fifteen?
Fifty-four point six million.
Fifty-four point six million, between water and sewer authorities, municipalities, nonprofits, name it. Quite an impressive array of projects. So some of the things that we wanted to do, kind of coming out of the pre-grant application process, is to identify, again, community need, identify ways to fund it. Obviously, once you figure out what the community need is, and it far exceeds what our grant allotment is, we need to figure out ways to potentially leverage funds with other grant programs that are coming out at the federal level.
And state level.
And state level. And also, I'm trying to think here.
Well, we use two of our consulting firms, because one of the things with the commissioners, we want to, you know, we've identified with them that we need to make sure that we are maximizing our funding. So if there is an opportunity for a grant at the federal or state level, and there is a good chance one of the entities could get that grant if we provided the match. So rather than funding an entire project through ARPA, what if we helped them apply for a grant, or what if we provided the match for that grant? So the consultant firm that helped start with our pie charts here, they're looking at state funding options, and we've asked them to go through our listing. They've identified probably fifty or sixty different projects that were applied for that would also be beneficial to go for a state grant. Now, obviously, not everybody's going to be able to get a state grant, but we want to see who is ready to apply, and would that work with the timeframes for those state grants? We've also asked our federal consultant that works with us at the federal level to do the same thing. So we're getting the feedback from them now, and John is working on what we'll recommend to the commissioners for the first possible round of applications. So John's working with, we're using CEDOCOG as a helpful administrator for these grants, because any money coming from the feds requires a lot of strings and requires a lot of administrative oversight. And we'll be audited, and we'll be, you know, they don't give anything out for free. It's not free money, it's got a lot of strings with it, so.
So, yeah, going forward, we'll be doing a little bit more detailed analysis of all the pre-grant applications and constructing an actual more in-depth grant application that we'll be sending out to prospective applicants. And that's, you know, within the pool of projects that we've brought. That'll help us drill down into, you know, timeframe, project readiness, I'm trying to think of some other things, you know, the environmental permits, say if it's in infrastructure projects, where they're at with that. Because, I mean, the expectation is this money is spent within a relatively short period of time. So we need to.
This is better than the CARES Act fund was, because I think we have basically six months to spend that money.
That's correct.
But when you're looking at some of the types of projects that we're seeing, water, sewer, certain infrastructure projects, construction projects, there's a lot of permitting involved in that. And if you don't have your design ready, or if you don't have any of those permits already in place, even though we don't have to spend the money until, the project doesn't have to be completed until 2026, the issue is more along the lines of, can you complete the project by 2026? Because in some cases, some of these projects are pretty large, and we have to see whether or not they can do it, because it can be the top priority project, but if they can't complete it by 2026, we can't fund it, so.
Can you, John, can you clarify, the twenty-four point seven million that's been requested, is it requested from Lycoming County government or all municipalities?
Yeah, those are the, no, those are the department requests. The fifty-four point six million is outside the county government. That's.
But the twenty-four point seven is just?
Just county departments.
Those are needs expressed by each department.
Yeah. Now, not necessary, all those needs may be eligible. We're coming through that list now, but, yeah.
We gathered their requests or their requirements, because I don't know that you can say every request is truly a requirement.
Yeah.
And so as we move.
And we'll be audited, and we'll be, you know, they don't give anything out for free. It's not free money, it's got a lot of strings with it, so.
So, yeah, going forward, we'll be doing a little bit more detailed analysis of all the grant, or pre-grant applications, and constructing an actual, more in-depth grant application that we'll be sending out to prospective applicants. And that's, you know, within the pool of projects that we've already had. That'll help us drill down into, you know, timeframe, project readiness, I'm trying to think of some other things, you know, the environmental permits, see if it's in infrastructure projects, where they're at with that. Because, I mean, the expectation is this money is spent within a relatively short period of time.
Yeah.
So we need to.
This is better than the CARES Act Fund was, because I think we have basically six months to spend that money.
That's correct.
But when you're looking at some of the types of projects that we're seeing, water, sewer, certain infrastructure projects, construction projects, there's a lot of permitting involved in that. And if you don't have your design ready, or if you don't have any of those permits already in place, even though we don't have to spend the money until, the project doesn't have to be completed until 2026, the issue is more along the lines of, can you complete the project by 2026? Because in some cases, some of these projects are pretty large, and we have to see whether or not they can do it. Because it can be the top priority project, but if they can't complete it by 2026, we can't fund it, so.
Can you, John, can you clarify, the twenty-four point seven million that's been requested, is it requested from LeCombe County Government, or all municipalities?
Yeah, those are the, no, those are the department requests. The fifty-four point six million is outside the county government.
Okay.
That's.
But the twenty-four point seven is just?
Just county departments.
Those are needs expressed by each department.
Yeah. Now, not necessary all those needs may be eligible, we're coming through that list now. But, yeah.
We gathered the requests or the requirements, because I don't know that you can say every request is truly a requirement.
Yeah.
And so as we move forward, I think you've heard a bunch of different categories and allowable uses, and things like generational. So the thought is to further define what the evaluation criteria is for all of these requirements slash requests, be able to give them a grade, completely objectively, scoring measures, present that information to the commissioners. Because at the end of the day, you know, we take a look at each one of these requests as it's an investment in the community. So how do we determine what that return on investment is?
From, I just wanted to, as you're talking about that, when you look at this, I mean, obviously, the impetus for figuring out what the community need is, what the county need is, it is the ARPA funding. But as a community development-focused, basically, as the planning department focus and mission, you know, we're looking at projects that we can pursue, you know, beyond ARPA funds, things that we can seek grants for in the future, try to help projects, again, outside of just this scope.
Yeah, if we had somebody call us and say, you know, I've got this project, and it sounds like a really good project, but we weren't sure it was going to fit into the ARPA timeframe, or fit into the ARPA eligibility, we asked them to still submit it. Because we want to have a more comprehensive list of the community needs, because there are potential other opportunities for funding. You know, whether it's something with Act thirteen, or something that we could maybe help them. We actually had a number of people put in for some, a small mini-grant, Act thirteen Legacy Fund, and also submitted for ARPA funds, and our planning staff is actually working with them on a grant application for a park and rec grant. So, because it was a really good project, and we thought they had a good chance of possibly getting funding. So we're looking at this more holistically, and if we can't help them with ARPA, can we help them attain results through somewhere else? Whether it's just helping planning-wise, helping grant-wise, helping whatever.
Part of the thought process is, many of you are probably familiar with the commissioner's strategy on utilizing Act thirteen funds. And so we try to leverage Act thirteen in a particular project, and let's just use an example like the airport. I think if we leveraged three million dollars of Act thirteen in the entire project, but at the end of the day, that brought in sixteen million, roughly. So the idea is, how do we get the most bang for the buck out of these dollars?
And one of the issues we ran into CARES funding, and we're going to run into them this way, too, which is why it's beneficial that the commissioners were able to put in for the revenue loss and some of the other things, is fire departments and EMS and stuff like that, not all of our fire departments are 501(c)(3)'s. So not all of them are eligible for this funding. They might be a nonprofit, but they've kind of shanghai-ed us into it's only eligible to go to a 501(c)(3). So we ran into that with the CARES fund. Now, the commissioners have used some of their CARES Act money that was left over to go to other fire departments that were not eligible as a 501(c)(3). So some of that money has been given to those departments, and some of that may have to occur here, depending upon who has requested the funds, if they are determined to be a prioritized project. So, I mean, right there is an issue that we've seen, and we've asked that question. We don't know why they did that. Because across Pennsylvania, that's a major issue. A lot of fire companies are not 501(c)(3)'s.
So, you know, I have an engagement to be at at seven o'clock, so I have to leave here at ten oh, and, you know, we've given them thirty minutes of what we're doing, and I want to hear what they have to say, as much as I can, so.
Just real briefly, the last slide that we have, is we've broken this down into now categories, where we'll have all those requests put into these different categories, and those are economic development, the public works, which is the water and sewer, the recreation, the other miscellaneous, education, agricultural, and public safety, and then last, to the fiscal, really, to county and LeCombe. And we'll put those different requests in each one of those categories as we make our decision. But to better assure that the community needs to be addressed, the mission is broken down into those different categories. So, yes, due to our short timeframe, Commissioner, we'd like to hear from any of you now.
And that doesn't mean it ends at seven, I just have to.
Yes, Tom?
I'll be first, I guess. You know, I've met with you earlier, but I just think somehow.
Tom, could you kind of, we're live streaming, I'm sorry. So we have this on live feed right now, so if you could come up, please, and just state your name, and, thank you very much. Thanks for the money.
Better than any better. Tom Adams, Williamsport. I see a need for, to really reach in, help our farmers as best we can, and somehow maybe use that natural gas if it's, if we kind of, I don't know what it would take to maybe have a fertilizer plant put in the county. I don't know what that cost would be, get investors to maybe put into that, instead of relying on the farm entities to supply that. I know I've already heard some, at least one or two farmers saying they might not be able to farm next year, because of the cost of the fertilizer, tripling already. Another way is to maybe use natural gas that we do have in the county to increase maybe production of possibly going to natural gas vehicles. I don't know what that involves, like going from a gasoline engine to a natural gas engine. I don't know what holes involve, but I think it can be done. But there's a couple ideas in that area. And possibly, maybe even dredging the river bottom for fertilizer use, see what that soil is like underneath, if there's any harmful chemicals that have to poop from, huh? Couple things.
That's how you know our team has moved forward with natural gas and some of their fleets, so that kind of process is moving forward.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you very much.
My name is Joy Walls, I'm with LeCombe Arts, and this is Judy Olinsky with LeCombe Arts also. We're a nonprofit organization that was established way back in nineteen sixty. We've supported the arts in Williamsport and LeCombe County through various arts experiences, art shows, arts festivals, and public art. And as you walk through downtown Williamsport, you see a lot of the public art that we have been able to bring to the community. Our mission is to generate awareness and opportunities and support the arts. We have found that our business model can enhance the community through the development of cultural tourism. And when we look at other counties, and when we look at Pennsylvania Wiles, what money it has generated for the community, you know, LeCombe Arts, you know, contributes to that in a small way. But we're at the point where we need to do more with that and expand on that. The County Comprehensive Plan and the Heart of Williamsport Community Engagement Plan cited LeCombe Arts, a cultural district and cultural trails as economic and community development assets. And we're to the point where our organization can do more to develop cultural districts and cultural trails. We're at the point where our organization is ready to grow, we just need a little bit of incentive to help us over the hump, because right now, we are a volunteer organization, and we're moving, we have plans already for cultural trails and cultural districts to implement. The funding for LeCombe Arts staff will diversify our tourism and ensure the maximum community and economic development of the arts, and also our historic and cultural assets. According to the Americans for the Arts, we have added over one point seven billion dollars to Pennsylvania's economy. And that same year, in twenty fifteen, Pennsylvania generated one point three billion in dollars and added four point two million dollars to the economy of the northern tier. So through branding of arts as the cultural center of the northern tier, the arts can add to its economy and economic visibility.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
You mentioned the cultural trails. Do they go throughout LeCombe County? Because you're talking initially about just Williamsport.
And the county.
Throughout the county, the cultural trails would go throughout the county?
Absolutely.
Okay.
In actuality, public artworks has been working out throughout the county for the last fifteen years. We've put two pieces of art in the airport, we've put a piece of art up on the Riverwalk also, in addition to what we have done in the downtown. And the cultural trail, the one that we've worked on over the years, is to do a public art walking tour of the downtown. But future cultural trails could be the Underground Railroad. We have a fabulous story, they have a replica of the boats that they took the slaves up the river on, out in Muncie, so there's a lot of possibilities. And one of the things in a county as big and as wide as ours, is that things are in odd little places, but, you know, the historic things, the things that tell the story of the people. But the thing that the arts can do is, we can fill in those gaps so that it becomes a tourist attraction. And tourism, eighty percent of every tourist, I mean, what is it, eighty percent of tourist dollars, part of it is spent on a culture. And we are so in a position, for the last twenty years, we have worked on creating the Art Town brand, and as Joy said, we've been, you know, the County Comprehensive Plan and the Heart of Williamsport, and the people have wanted this. And we've developed a program that utilizes all this information in what is now currently recognized as the national, by the National Governors Association, as absolutely the best practices in rural areas to generate prosperity. And we have more evidence about that. And then luckily, over in, that row right there is Mr. Jerry Walls, who is the guy behind the Susquehanna Greenways. And for the last twenty-five years, we have also worked with Mr. Walls, because a town that is an art town is also a river town and a trail town. So it's like, we brand ourselves as an art town, but then that opens all these other portals of cultural tourism to us. So we belong in the category, I was looking at the categories there, because when you talk about the arts, everyone thinks it's sort of a fun, feel-good thing, which it is, and that's one of the wonderful parts of it. But we come under the category of economic development. If you look at rural prosperity through the arts and the creative sector, it can bring in a lot of money. But you need, we need a professional person to do that. You don't get the consistency of performance from a volunteer staff that you would get if we had one pro. And God bless, we have such dedicated volunteers. I mean, everybody else is struggling to get volunteers, and if we had a staff person to manage them, we could get them. And talk about your kids. Everything that we do creates a better life for these children and is educational for them. Both of us are old teachers.
Or used to be teachers.
So another question for you, with the city having twenty-six million in ARPA funds, have you approached them about their ARPA funds and utilizing them, and if they said they're going to give you any?
They have not said.
Have you met with them?
We have met with them.
Okay, great.
Right. And one of the concerns of the city was sustainability, and, well, it even says this in the Comprehensive Plan, that one of the best ways to do this would be to get partially funded by the hotel tax. But also in the Comprehensive Plan, your planners suggested that we write a business plan, which, you know, on top of everything else we had to do, which, but doing the American Rescue Plan work, we did that, we started the development of business plans. And we realized as we were doing that, with the, having a professional director, we could develop our program to a point where after the two years that you invested in us, we think we could manage it ourselves. I mean, you're going to get more bang for your buck if you put some hotel money in it, because it is tourism. But we think we can do it. We can show you the numbers.
So I think, if you look at the categories here, one of the, if you read the policy statement behind the ARPA funds, one of the goals was to enhance outdoor recreation, because there was an understanding that as a result of the COVID pandemic, that people were outdoors, part of the goal behind the ARPA funds was to create resiliency in communities, so that when there is another pandemic, which there probably will be, it may not be this year, but certainly, maybe even within our lifetime, just simply due to the way the world is getting smaller and smaller, right? We see that with the spotted lantern fly that the commissioners got a poster here. And it's a real issue, but, so I think that it would also hit the category of recreation. You know, I think that one of the important things about what you're saying today is that we're responsible fiduciaries for the pension fund, for the county. And one of the policies we pursue is diversification. We are highly, highly diversified. And I think that one of the lessons we need to take from that experience is that we need to be highly diversified in our economic development. We cannot put all our eggs in one basket. You know, we can be a recreation place for Little League and so forth, but that's not everybody. Not every family is going to travel to Williamsport for Little League. Not every family's going to come here to see art. Not every family's going to come here to see trails, to do trails. But the point is, some will come for trails, some will come for art, some will come for Little League, some will come for the river. And that is the goal if we want to repopulate this town. And I just, I think that what you folks have done is fantastic. There is example after example, in those books that you gave us, of little communities that have seen tremendous growth. I know it from having lived in New Hampshire and in Maine, Portland, Maine, you know, small communities up and down the east, which are, and the same thing in Virginia. So I hope that you will present something to us, because I think it is really, the time has come for us to really embrace and move in a positive direction with this.
Well, I wish we could claim that we were being innovative, but I think if you look at this, especially, well, no, there's hundred vessel art towns in America, what we're talking about is happening all across America. And not only is it creating economic development, it's having a real impact on the quality of life in America. And this feeling like the last, I don't know how many years, it's almost like we're down for the count in America, we're not down for the count, we're rebuilding, we're changing, and we're developing and adapting, the way you talked about it. And when you talk about generational, this is generational.
It's changing.
Yes.
It's changing.
Yes. And one of the things that I love the best about that rural prosperity through the arts, when you build trails, you build cultural districts, you build an art town, what you generate are small businesses. You generate wineries, you generate restaurants, you generate bars, you generate shops that sell clothes, shops where people make clay. So you're creating, like, over the last fifty years, I've watched the chains take away our hardware stores, our office furniture stores, all of those, but there's still these artisan activities that are left to us as a people. And you can see the entrepreneurial spirit in America, it is just amazing. And the arts has created a new opportunity for that to happen, so.
Thank you, ladies.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
We do have their application.
Great. Thank you very much.
Commissioners and staff, my name is Dwayne Hirschberg, and I'm with Habitat for Humanity. And I've watched the ARPA fund story sort of unfold, and while I would have been delighted a few months ago if I would have just received a check, it's been gratifying to watch the thoughtfulness and the strategy that you're bringing to this, and looking at the comprehensive picture, the needs, not only that, but how you can leverage, use this to leverage other funds, and make sure that these funds that we're getting through the ARPA system are not just duplicated funds that you could have gotten elsewhere. So thank you for your good, hard work on that. And I've also been in conversation with the city, and I'm seeing the same thing there, and the thoughtfulness that they're bringing in hearing public thoughts. So I'm grateful for the leaders that we have. So I'm grateful for the leaders that we have. So Habitat for Humanity, we've been around since 1990 and have completed about 41 homes. All of the homes so far have been in the city of Williamsport. And I'm also having this conversation with the city about funding. The sustainability, the return on investment, so when Habitat builds a home and sells it to a homeowner, because it's not a giveaway program, the homeowner pays not the full price for the house, because we build this at no profit and no interest. And we hold a mortgage that's affordable to someone who's making $25,000 a year, our last homeowner, with a 30-year mortgage. And in 30 years, she will own a home, and it will probably be the first time in that family's history that they have an estate to pass on to the children. And it's a pretty remarkable thing. They also pay taxes. I did a calculation, and I think that the homes that Habitat has built in Lycoming County and in the city generate about $100,000 a year in property taxes. So it comes back. And I think that the request that I will be submitting, my calculation is the rate of return on the investment that I'll be requesting is between 12 and 15 years of the tax money coming back. And then after that, it will be just new tax money that's generated in, not perpetuity, but for a long time. And one of the priorities, as I saw in the original policy that came out, was affordable housing as a use for the ARPA funds. And that falls also in the economic development piece for the homeowners. So I thank you for your consideration. And we're looking at several homes over in the south side that we expect to get title to within a few months. And we're also looking at a couple of vacant lots here in the city for future building. And I'm in conversation with Skip and the other folks with the city about access to those properties. So I thank you for your consideration and hope that we can build homes where people live and work and become all that they're intended to be in Lycoming County.
Great, thank you.
You know, just to jump off something you said, the commissioners have really looked at the fact that when we build new housing and we expand the tax base, we lessen the tax burden on the existing taxpayers, right? 100 people paying taxes is less of a burden than 80 people. So I'm glad you pointed out to us that those Habitat homes are returning tax dollars. And when we put a family into a home, it also creates a space for someone else in whatever housing that they're coming from.
Right.
It may not be the greatest housing, but then often you have somebody coming out of homelessness or a halfway house or shelter that moves into that space while they're getting their life back together. And then at some point, maybe become rent a property or maybe become homeowners themselves. So it's a whole continuum that we're on. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner?
Director?
How you doing?
Good.
Kurt Olmer. I would like to see some of these monies spent on a proper facility and equipment for an office that's right there at the top of probably being affected the most by COVID, and that would be the coroner's office. He's been fighting for a long time for a proper facility and tools, and I don't know if any of you have ever gone along with him, but if you have not, you need to, see what that office goes through. I know what that office makes money-wise, salary-wise, and they're not doing it for the money, they're doing it because they're true public servants. So as a taxpayer of Lycoming County, I would like to see some of the funds go toward that office.
Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you.
We have been working on the coroner's office for the past, well, for a decade with you gentlemen, but we've been working on a building for the past roughly 16, 17 months, trying to acquire a building that would not only just service the coroner, but would also take care of other county needs, which would be the magistrate Fry's office, who currently leases a office in the city of Williamsport. It would move him back up into his traditional Newbury area that he came from, which the courts prefer. And then also moving supervised bail into the same facility, along with central processing in the DUI center. By having all those entities in there, it services those populations. You utilize the same holding cells for that. With supervised bail, you could help do the 24/7 operation, you could reduce the population also to the prison by having the bail agents right there along with the central processing. And at the same time, we can expand upstairs and direct retention, the future record retention. So we've been working on this building for quite some time. We should have a decision on that, I would hope, within the next six weeks.
Yeah.
We've had some setbacks on that, but as we move forward, then we'll know for sure whether we're going to utilize this building for all those entities or we're just going to go in a different direction just for the coroner. But you are absolutely right, the coroner needs a home, and it has to be at the top of the agenda.
You know, the, as I said earlier, part of the policy of the ARPA funds is to build resiliency, and that coroner's place, a morgue, is necessary in the event of another pandemic, as well as the other crisis, which is the opioid crisis that they've had to struggle through as first-line responders on all the overdoses. And we kind of, that kind of got put to the back when the pandemic hit, but it's still there, and there's still people, you know, ODing. So, yeah, we hope to. I think it's fair to say that all three of us are committed to trying to find a solution. And the evidence that we're committed is that we've been working on this building, grinding through some misunderstandings and misunderstandings with the owner of the building, but we're grinding through trying to get to the other side of it. I mean, we have to do things by statute, which means that we have to have appraisals, we have to have, that protect the taxpayers. We can't just grab and buy a building. But, so that's what we're waiting on.
And then, no one's been affected more through the pandemic than that office. They have seen it first and every day. So we appreciate deeply what they've done. Anybody else?
Evening, Jack.
I don't have a wish list, I, just some comments, I guess, or ideas.
You should introduce yourself.
Jack McCurnan, Williamsport. I think the levy should be a very high priority, and it probably is.
It is.
I'm assuming that John, that the planning department's using, and it escapes me now, but the 10-year plan that laid out, the strategic plan for future development.
The comprehensive plan.
The comprehensive plan. Okay. And Commissioner Metzger, you mentioned the broadband. I know, you know, that was something that's kind of in the works, but I have to think now with the remote access being such a big thing for almost everybody's lives, that that's got to be a...
We're currently in a partnership with four other counties where we see the COGS actually have been spearheading it, where we've all put a million dollars in. You'll see the infrastructure starting in Moreland Township, I believe, is the first one within the next couple of months that they're going to start breaking ground in that area. We've been told by the state that there's another package coming through that would be broadband monies specifically for that, because you're absolutely correct that if anything's been identified through COVID, it's a need for broadband, even on a much larger scale.
And I think we have to realize that there will be additional monies, and, you know, the state and federal government is one of their top priorities. So we'd rather let them use their money versus our scarce resources.
Separate allocations, just like there were to the counties for broadband.
So having said that, though, because actually when we talked about this early on, I was going to make the comment later on, we have to make sure we're going to get those funds, because if we don't bring broadband to every part of this county, we won't have any economic development. I mean, people will not, it's like electricity in 1935 or 1940, they're just not going to come here. They're not going to come here, they're not going to buy houses. I'll be honest with you, I moved to Hepburn Township, if I had recognized the difficulty we had up there, where we don't, we only have DSL. So we're definitely looking at it, but I think we need to nail it down. There are counties, you brought back from CCAP, the county, Green County, made a modest investment of a million bucks and were able to build...
Green County has done a marvelous job in two years out there. We're actually, I think it's the same date, April 12th, I think we meet, but then we'll have fun.
Yeah.
And we're going to be talking to those commissioners out there.
They built out, not just broadband, they built out hot fiber optic cable.
Right.
And it was pretty reasonable. So, yeah, we definitely need to look at that.
And Comcast, I think if you saw in the newspaper, they just were awarded a grant to help them expand some of their systems in the southwestern side of the county, I think it would be.
Yeah.
Right.
The project with CDECOG, while it's great and we're happy that we're doing it, it's going to affect a very small number of businesses, 63 businesses. And that's what it was designed to do. It was a pilot program, and it was designed three years ago when we didn't have some of the information we have now and so forth. But anyway, just to...
I'm sure in the whole scheme of things, too, you're trying to use the money the best that you can to help either develop the area, grow the area, but also help the taxpayers going forward. And, you know, the judicial system, I'm sure there's been major changes, and I haven't really seen a lot about that. But I would think that the use of remote for sentencing and hearings and that, has that been a bigger...
We've actually met within the day, we're talking today about technology, and they have their Polycon system, they have three now, they do hearings from the prison on a regular basis. And they've been utilizing technology the best they can through this whole pandemic.
Possibly helping River Valley, I don't, I don't, I have no affiliation with them, but I just think that they've been a River Valley health and dental, to help them strengthen their system, because I think they've really been available during this pandemic. And maybe, you know, especially in the area, helping seniors, you know, get quick attention and get quick results when there have been issues there. When they talk about frontline workers, I think of the staff at places like that, you know, the nurses and the staff that are there, if there's any way to help them, that would be good. The other thing is, and I don't know, but if RMS, you know, if they're, I would think because of the pandemic, maybe the tonnage was down or not, maybe their sales were down, or maybe it went the other way.
Yeah, went the other way.
Went the other way, because everybody's home.
Everybody's home remodeling and throwing stuff out.
It went really well.
Well, the thing that I was thinking about is if you could use any of that money, maybe to help them buy at the transfer station the property to the west of them, just a tail-end piece there that would help the transfer station. My recollection was that Director York's always wanted a little bit more of a footprint there so he could carry out their job a little bit better, but...
It's a good idea.
And the county HR, I mean, I read and hear of the issues you are encountering with the lack of people. And I'm sure you're looking at it, but if there's a way to use the funding to help, see if you can shuffle the jobs around, pay people more, keep the headcount down, you know, and keep the legacy costs going out. And I guess finally, the children and youth, I don't know, you know, what's going on there, but I would have to think they probably encountered a lot of tough times during this period, and maybe some money can be helped to, reused to help the children and youth.
Through the pandemic, I believe that you're going to see mental health really increase, mental health crises increase, you're going to see a rise in addiction, you're going to see numbers that are going to probably go through the roof unfortunately as a result of the pandemic, people being in their homes, cases of abuse. Unfortunately, those are the sad effects of this pandemic also that are going to be pronounced in the next few years.
One more thing is, the senior, the senior community, from what I've heard, the Meals and Wheels people that went out to deliver meals during this time period were some of the only people that the seniors that are shut in had a chance to see. And I don't know if there's any way you can, you know, work with step to possibly, you know, they, I think, should be considered a frontline worker, or, you know, that went above and beyond to helping that community during that time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to thank you for attending and hearing your stories, because, you know, you are right, it is about economic development, you know, what happened, our city and the arts. Habitat is a great program. And I see Tim back there, who is instrumental, as I recall, and is also a comedian, but, but, yes, and we've seen it work, and that's what's impressive. We have very limited resources. When we're talking about $22 million, I know my colleagues just can't wait to give it out. Neither can I. But we have to do it wisely. And everyone made a very strong argument today for your position, and, you know, I'm sure we can do something. We'll just put it all together, our planning department has done a fantastic job so far. And CDECOG has done a great job for us as well.
They're here tonight to answer any questions. They drove up just to answer any questions and listen, and they've been great partners through all this, trying to decide how we can do what, how we can do it, and further make sure that it all passes the muster when it gets audited, so...
You know, Commissioner, I think what was truly important about the information that you provided to us is I think it will help us further define our evaluation criteria going forward, because a lot of these things are linked.
Very, very much, yeah.
And it's very difficult to just throw that out in two or three slides for me.
Are there other people that wanted to speak? Tim, I didn't know if you wanted to speak.
Listen, I do have to leave, so...
Yeah, that's okay.
Tim, I'd like to hear you.
Make sure you tell a joke about it.
Contrary to other comments, this is a pretty serious project here we're talking about. But let me just talk about, my experience has been 38 years in jail, and I got out, I retired, and I discovered that health, hunger, and housing are big areas. And I'm trying to piece different things in my 48 hours a week that I can apply to it. First of all, the nonprofits try to catch those who fall between the cracks, and it's key. I've had contact with the nonprofits all through my career now. It's just, they do a lot, and you can't solve all their problems. But the fact that you did the survey and you got this input from all these nonprofits, you need to catch that information, and you need to get those nonprofits to understand that they're not in silos, because what they solve in one thing, we've got the social determinants of health. Those things are impact on health, but they also impact every one of those individual things. So we need to bring everyone aboard on that. You saw Raise the Region, look at the response of the people just to help those nonprofits. And of course, there's always the federal things and state to have little tie-ins that they have to do at the same time, if they got the message to take. And with this data that you have, about what were some of those specific? My particular pre-application is miniscule to what you all saw there, but at the same time, is, in my particular coalition, we're 28 years old, we're involved with Nurse Family Partnership, we are involved with River Valley, and we do things with the Youth Development Task Force that you know about. But it's just that little segment that we say, we're part of the whole community, because we need to keep the kids here... because we need to keep the kids here. We do the Safe Kids with the coroner by preventing injuries, because we want them here safe.
Tim, you should tell the public, this is being livestreamed to the public. Tell them the name of the organization and...
Well, which one?
Well, you're talking about livestream, I assume.
Well, I'm volunteer coordinator for the Licombe County Health Improvement Coalition. It's a 501(c)(3). It started in 1994. Started with the doctors saying, we need something to help people prevent injuries and to be healthier. I have 38 people on the board from all different sectors of life. And we meet, we've been meeting via Zoom. We continue to talk what we have to do, but we also, a lot of our contact is person-to-person. And we've not been able to do that. But we've been able to have a couple of our task forces just to be able to do things in the community via Zoom and however we can get the information out. That's our role. But I'm also involved with that mental health, the NAMI, Licombe Housing Development Corporation. Those are groups too, that just try to address a particular aspect of life and to just get people to be better. And that's what we had to do. I admire the work you're doing. I think it's great. But I think we don't, we should not lose that concept of, okay, yeah, we did this survey back in 2022, but we want you to know as a group of nonprofits, these are what the people are saying, and guess what? You're all kind of saying the same thing, and we need to tie each other together. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
And just so you know, we do try to do a lot of that tie-in by working with step, working with CEDOCOG. CEDOCOG actually also does our Community Development Block Grant Funding Administration. So they work with a lot of entities to do that. Jenny Pachano, our lead planner, she works with CEDOCOG on the CBPG program, but she also, we do FAIR every year. And we are one of the top five counties in accessing FAIR funds, which is housing funds that come out of the Marcel's Shale. And Jenny handles that program every year. We do outreach to all these entities so that we can try to spread that knowledge and also access to those funds. So anything that you can give us that would give us better ideas towards coordinating is great.
Jenny, you have anything you want to add?
Nope, not at this time. If you're ready to get in touch with me if you have any questions or talk about your projects.
Did we get anything online at all?
No, I had not had anything.
Okay.
Well, thank you, everyone, for attending. As you can see, this is an exciting project. There's a lot going on in the county that's tremendous. I believe that our county's going in the right direction. It's growing. And I'm saying what's going on in the city and different parts of the county, but there are some enormous projects out there that we have to tackle and look forward to helping who we can help. So have a great evening. Thank you for attending.
Thank you.
Thank you.